So let's call this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws thirty, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately address the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so through the instructions that have been posted on our website and posted on the town site as well. So should we take attendance at the meeting to start?
Sure.
So, uh, Mr. Scott Buckley?
Yes, President.
Mr. Rich McGowan?
President.
Mr. Chris Fabrosilia?
Here.
Mr. Diana Botwell?
Yeah.
And Miss Jeanne Ambriano?
Sure.
So should I introduce the first item for school committee reorganization?
Uh, yes. I understand a motion on the first floor.
So I understand a motion on the reorganization for nomination of the Chair of the committee?
I am ruled that the committee vote to have Charlie as the Chair for the upcoming year.
I'm sure you won't be comfortable.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cause you're a roll caller.
Yeah, I was trying to...
So, all in favor is Botwell?
Aye.
Miss Ambriano?
Aye.
Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Fabrosilia?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Buckley?
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, and, uh, Mr. McGowan and Mr. Botwell for, you know, asking for another term. So, we wanted to pick me up, let it off as quickly, and then come back to that. Why don't we just do that quickly? So, I'll entertain a nomination for Vice Chair. Anybody interested? McGowan, are you interested again, maybe? I want to nominate Richard McGowan to continue as Vice Chair the upcoming year.
Okay.
Question? Anything on the other nomination? Is there a coup? We'll do a roll call vote. Botwell?
Aye.
Miss Ambriano?
Aye.
Fabrosilia?
Aye.
I'll be an aye and I'll let Rich go last. Rich?
Aye.
Okay, that's a five zero. Secretary. You want to nominate?
I nominate Jeanne Ambriano as Secretary.
Okay.
Aye. Question? Roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Jeanne?
Aye.
Five zero. Representative? I nominate Diana Botwell as Legislative Representative.
Okay.
Question? Chris?
Aye.
Jeanne?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Diana?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much. We have our officers. Okay, thank you everybody for attending. We're going to do that quickly. We'll start with public input, and if anybody that has anything they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda for this evening, please unmute or type in a chat. Okay, I'm not seeing any right now. We move on to our student report. You have, Diana, oh, I always screw up your name, Ellofo, for student report. Diana, are you here?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Um, for today's student report, I want to start off talking a little bit about MCAS. MCAS has happened these past two weeks, and as you know, it was optional for juniors, and they will have the option to take it again in the fall. And today, bringing the first three blocks of the day, the sophomores also took it. And from what I've heard, it went pretty well. Um, eighteen exams are also bigger than the agenda. They're coming up in terms of the fine arts. Every man just strings past me weekend. Um, edited by a...
Did we try to call?
Yeah, I think we're having trouble hearing. Um, I think this is the light or internet. You're frozen right now.
Then...
Hey, do you want to try turning off your video?
It's loud, but no.
Do you want to, could you try turning off your video feed? Cause you're breaking up on us.
Um, there's... And it's been very... You have a great... Yeah, can you hear me?
He's been hearing right now.
Hello. Okay, cool. Um, where was I? Um, the spring sports season has started, and we have been lucky to have a good season so far in terms of we've been getting wins in softball, tennis, lacrosse, track, and baseball, um, for both boys and girls. And there have been high school students included in the transcript as well this week. Um, Alex Carpenter actually set, um, a new PR at one of the track meets two weeks ago for pole vault. Um, Madison Van is also in transcript, Tim McCarthy, Sal Shell, and Shay Hanson. So congratulations to them. Um, some more stuff going on at North Reading High School includes, um, elections have started, lots of opportunities for student leadership in terms of class officers, student council, and clubs across the board. Um, Social Activism Club will be hosting and a speaker next week, uh, actually tomorrow. Councilmember Sookari Chao will be speaking on, um, Asian American and Pacific Islander, um, just life as a councilman and falling into that category. Um, SLAM will be introducing new leaders and mentors this week, and National Honor Society recently released, um, its newest members. And then last, and then the last thing I want to talk about is, um, AP exams because I know I talked a little bit about it earlier, but it's been a big topic this week because of how close they're getting, and it's going to be a little bit of a different process this year, especially with so many students taking it remotely from home. Um, because some exams are going to be hosted in school, but most of them will be at home. So the preparation for that has been much different. Um, we've been doing reviews, mostly student-led, which has been a nice way to like, outlet yourself as a student to be more independent. Um, and overall, I would turn on my camera, but you probably won't be able to hear me, but I have packets here that I wanted to show you, but that's okay. Um, and that's all I have for today, unless anybody has any questions.
Is there any questions or comments? Okay, so thank you very much, Diana.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to jump around a little bit. We're going to go to the guests that we have here. See a bunch of people from the little school here, and we welcome them. Sorry that we can't be there in attendance to see them in person, but we'll introduce the wonderful Principal Mrs. Molly. Molly?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
So, good evening and welcome to the little school, even though it's not really the little school. Imagine it's been two years since the last time you were there visiting with us. Um, before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment to reach out to Diana and Rich and congratulate them on the recent election and to tell you how happy I am to have you both back with us. So congratulations.
Thanks.
Um, so we're going to begin. This year was certainly a challenge. Truth be told, I haven't even had the time to reflect on the past fourteen months. I do know this, it certainly does take a village to educate a child, contrary to what you might have heard recently. Thank you to the school committee and our district administration, and most especially Dr. Daly and Mike Connelly for always supporting the schools in whatever needs we had this year and every year, really. Uh, much has been said about our faculty and staff, and most definitely our nurses. Every ounce of accolades they received have been well deserved, and I want to publicly acknowledge their hard work and dedication to the children of North Reading. I also want to give a shout out to the building principals. We were met with daunting challenges along the way, and I appreciate their collaboration, their professionalism, their respect, and their friendship. We were able to navigate through this unusual year by leaning on and learning from each other. Everyone I just mentioned rose to the challenges of this year, and in my opinion, I think we all succeeded. Even when we felt like we were at our wit's end, we all persevered and got the job done. It was pretty amazing to watch firsthand the transformation of teaching with previously unfamiliar technology and our students' ability to learn remotely. The kids were fantastic. Never once did I hear complaining about the masks or social distancing or the fact that the playground was closed. They just went with the flow, and after reading some of the comments in this year's yearbook, I was blown away by how thankful they all are to be back in school.
This call is now moving forward.
Didn't include the administration, the faculty, the staff, and the nurses. Our village includes so many more people, the bus drivers, our bus coordinator, Wardley, the food service personnel, the custodians, the parents, and most especially our students. This village worked together to make the best of an unimaginable situation. Keeping a focus on what was best for the kids gave us all the guidance we needed to ensure that we were doing all we could and were doing the best we could for them. I have never been prouder to be a member of North Reading Public Schools than I am right now and after this year. So with that being said, um, I'd like to introduce, um, our faculty and children that will be joining us tonight. Just keep in mind, classroom projects looked a little bit different this year. The opportunity for group work was a challenge since we needed to ensure that the children remained socially distanced throughout their day. However, the teachers collaborated and planned opportunities and activities to keep the spark of learning alive. Tonight, you will see a sampling of two such projects. Mrs. Kelly, our digital learning specialist, along with Miss McCarthy from the third grade, and Mrs. Reed from fifth grade, along with some of our absolutely amazing children, will be presenting some of their impressive work. I hope you enjoy the presentation this evening. Mrs. Kelly?
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Molly. I'm going to go ahead and present now. Although this year has presented many challenges, there really are some silver linings. Teachers have excelled at using technology. They have mastered online learning and have found ways to use technology to differentiate instruction for their students. They have curated materials that they can now use moving forward. In addition, they have become more proficient in integrating technology in their lessons, and they have continued to do so even with the students back in school.
Inventor research, digital learning, three McCarthy.
And I'd like to introduce Mrs. McCarthy.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kelly McCarthy, and I'm a third grade teacher at the little school here in North Reading. As Mrs. Molly and Mrs. Kelly mentioned, this year has been anything but traditional. When planning my lessons this year, I tried to think of how I could make them more interactive and engaging where students could complete it not only on paper, but also digitally for the sake of our hybrid learning model. The writing piece of this project that the students did touched on the standards displayed here while focusing on the writing process that students learn to use in third grade. This process includes brainstorming, drafting, editing, and publishing. The students worked so hard and really enjoyed the writing piece as well as the digital publication aspect. I'm so proud of them, and I know my two students here tonight cannot wait to share their creations with you all.
In addition to the literacy standards, we covered digital literacy standards as well. Uh, the strand of computer science standards have students using a variety of digital tools, collaborating with their peers, and being able to conduct research. The projects were completed in digital literacy, and they addressed standards on a regular basis. I'd like to introduce Edan and Jackson.
My name is Edan, and Miss McCarthy's third grade class. In digital learning, we turned our writing into newspaper articles using Google Docs. We learned how to include digress and captions. The last part of our project was making a chatter picture. Find pictures of our inventors and make pictures talk. I hope you enjoy seeing our projects. The first one is mine.
I was known for inventing the light bulb. I was born in Ohio in eighteen forty-seven. I tried to find answers to my questions. I read science books, did experiments, and made new inventions. When I was twelve, I sold food and newspapers on a train. I set up a small lab in a train car. I learned how to send and receive telegraph messages. My biggest contribution was the light bulb. I also made a phonograph, a new and improved bigger lab, and moved it to Menlo Park in New Jersey. People started calling me the Wizard of Menlo Park. I became one of the greatest American inventors. My invention of the light bulb was the key to light inside without windows. I am Thomas Edison.
Great.
I was known for inventing the light bulb. I was born in...
And this is my classmates' project on Wallace Amos.
My biggest contribution to our world is my base coat. Without the help from my aunt, I would not be the successful baker I am today. She played a big, major role in teaching me how to bake and run a business. The brand famous name is Shilla Round today, and everyone enjoys it very much. My biggest con...
That is our third grade project, and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kate Reed.
You're muted. Oh, boy. All right, let's try this again. Hi, I'm Kate Reed, and I teach fifth grade here at the little school. When Mrs. Kelly approached me about doing a cross-curricular opinion writing, digital learning project, I thought it sounded like a great idea. It provided an opportunity for students not only to be creative in their design of the sneaker, but to employ what we have been learning in empowering writers to become stronger writers and achieve the state standard. Opinion writing teaches children the importance of providing reasons to support their ideas. When teaching expository writing, we stress the necessity of finding evidence to support facts. When teaching opinion writing, we stress the importance of providing reasons to support your thoughts and beliefs. This sneaker design, opinion writing project, was a motivational opportunity for the students to further develop this skill. This can only be helpful if students prepare to become future political leaders, PR and marketing executives, lawyers, teachers, and responsible members of their community. Just listen to Hannah's presentation to see what I mean.
We use Google Drawings to, uh, create our designs, and Google Drawing is a free application that's part of the G suite of tools, and students can use it to create images, charts, and diagrams. We began by looking at careers in technology, specifically sneaker designers, and the students learned how to use Google Drawings to outline the image and replace colors. And I'd like to introduce Hannah.
Hi, Hannah Drew, in Mrs. McCarthy's fifth grade class, and this is my... This project was an idea by Mrs. Kelly for a fifth grade digital learning project. The challenge was to color a sneaker that would be the new Nike Air Force. She provided us with a picture of the Nike Air Force ones that we could fill in as a Google Drawings. And we wanted to make it our own, so we used it all we wanted. Before we started our sneaker, all of us watched the video of the process of the real sneakers being made, because the general idea of what this was and a little inspiration to go along with it. I chose the colors to be yellow and blue, but the idea of minions on my mind. Also, where else can you get neon yellow and blue designer sneakers? Especially made to LeBron James with extra grip, so he's not sliding on the court. And they're something that will help him stand out even more than he already does. Digital learning is a special that everyone really looks forward to, and the sneaker project was something that everyone kind of wants from them.
I'd like to share with you some of our designs. I'm just changing my screen.
Do you have any questions for any of the teachers or the kids? We welcome them.
Questions? McGowan?
Yeah, I would just say that, um, first of all, great job, everyone. Uh, I really wanted to learn more about, uh, Mr. Amos because I'm a big cookie fifty-nine myself, so, um, that's interesting, and I really liked the sneaker design, and I just was watching my quick when I saw the caption on it saying, uh, this is a career, I think you should really buy this sneaker. Really appreciated that, uh, that salesmanship, so, great job, everybody. I don't have any questions for that. Great job, everyone.
I just saw the sneaker, sorry, Jeanne Ambriano. Um, the sneaker's go-by, it has a chocolate chip cookie on it.
You can buy a pair?
Yeah, I should have a pair of tuckers.
Great. Um, you know, to the, first, to the, to the teachers, these were fantastic projects. It was, I thought they really let the kids show some incredible creativity and great writing skills, and to the kids, like, wow. I was, I mean, I was blown away by just how well polished they put together these, uh, these explanations of the, uh, of the inventors, and for the fifth graders, the, uh, I think there might be a couple of future marketers, which I don't know if that's good for the world, but it's great to see that kind of skill coming true. Great job. And I'll, I'll do that, I'll add a couple things, and no longer, probably no more teaching our kids. I mean, there's a little bit too much mention of LeBron James in there for me, but, you know, other than that, I mean, the shoes were great. And just for the students, I think, what always amazes me in these presentations is how polished our sneakers are in presenting. You know, I mean, these were third graders, you know, and then and Jackson, and then a fifth grader, and Hannah. I mean, you guys are so poised, you're so well spoken, and I, a lot of people that I've worked with can't get on a, on a Google Meet like this and speak as articulate and well as you guys did. So congratulations to you all. My only question for everybody I guess here, I know a lot of the stuff will be talking about what happened the last year and a half, and what to keep and what to get rid of, but I'm really curious at the elementary level, like, it was never our plan to have one-to-one devices for the elementary right away, but now we have that, and, you know, and at the school committee level, we've talked a lot about this, and we want to keep that going, but I guess I'm just curious, you know, going forward, I mean, what are your thoughts about that? I mean, how, how will that help change learning? I mean, obviously, in elementary, we don't want our students on Chromebooks, you know, a whole day, but I mean, do you think it's a beneficial tool that we should continue to fund and keep available, or is it not something that's really needed going forward?
I think personally, if you look to the careers of the future, I, I mean, I think if we were to backpedal and take the Chromebooks away from the children, we would be doing them a disservice. And I know, you know, prior to us having one-to-ones, when we had just a few carts in the building, the teachers were constantly planning lessons to use the Chromebooks, and then they would go get the cart, they would try to reserve the cart, and somebody else had it, and then they'd have to put their project off. So I think for so many reasons, and I mean, it's not just for projects, but it's for practice, it's for doing independent stuff at their desks, um, you know, I, I think it's very important that we, we keep it moving forward, and I appreciate that consideration.
Ellen? I have to agree with you, Mrs. Molly. It's just been amazing to see the progress that kids and teachers have made in using technology and the way it's being used, uh, it's, like I had said when I started my presentation, there's been some silver linings through all this, and the use of technology and how it's getting integrated, um, and how teachers are using technology to differentiate instruction for students has been huge, and when they have their own devices and they're not needing to share, it makes a really big difference.
I think, I think we, we talked a lot about it through the budget season, and it's something that is a priority of ours, but it's just interesting to see how it will play out, and it's funny that we've, we've been doing these presentations in elementary schools for a while, and, you know, before COVID, the major stage people were always the star of the show, and now it's all the digital learning people, so, you know, we have, we have a few stars at, at all the, um, presentations these days, so. I appreciate everybody coming tonight, and I need to follow up on comments. Bob?
Dr. Daly? I'll just say again, thank you to our, our students. What a wonderful job. You should be so proud. We're very proud of you. Great, great job. It's been great getting in your classrooms and getting to see some of you, and then getting to see these projects play out. Um, Miss Kelly, great job with this as all.
and speak as articulate and well as you guys did. So congratulations to you all. My only question for everybody, I guess, here. I know a lot of the stuff will be talking about what happened the last year and a half and what to keep and what to get rid of. And I'm really curious, at the elementary level, like, it was never our plan to have one-to-one devices for the elementary right away. But now we have that. And, you know, and at the school committee level, we talked a lot about this. And we want to keep that going. But I definitely just curious, you know, going forward, I mean, what are your thoughts about that? I mean, how will that help change learning? I mean, obviously, in elementary, we don't want our students on Chromebooks, you know, a whole day. But, I mean, do you think it's a beneficial tool that we should continue to fund and keep available? Or is it not something that's really needed going forward?
I think, personally, if you look to the careers of the future, I mean, I think if we were to backpedal and take the Chromebooks away from the children, we would be doing them a disservice. And I know, you know, prior to us having one-to-ones, when we had just a few carts in the building, the teachers were constantly planning lessons to use the Chromebooks. And then they would go get the cart, they would try to reserve the cart and somebody else had it. And then they'd have to put their project off. So I think for so many reasons, and I mean, it's not just for projects, but it's for practice, it's for doing independent stuff at their desks. You know, I think it's very important that we keep it moving forward. And I appreciate that consideration.
Helen?
I have to agree with you, Mrs. Molly. It's just been amazing to see the progress that kids and teachers have made in using technology and the way it's being used. Like I had said when I started my presentation, there's been some silver linings through all this. And the use of technology and how it's getting integrated and how teachers are using technology to differentiate instruction for students has been huge. And when they have their own devices and they're not needing to share, it makes a really big difference.
I think we talk a lot about it through the budget season. And it's something that is a priority of ours. But it's just interesting to see how it'll play out. And it's funny that we've been doing these presentations at elementary schools for a while. And, you know, before COVID, the major stage people were always the star of the show. And now it's all the digital learning people. So, you know, we have a few stars at all the presentations these days. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. And I need to follow up on comments, Bob?
Dr. Daley? I'll just say again, thank you to our students. What a wonderful job. You should be so proud. We're very proud of you. Great, great job. It's been great getting in your classrooms and getting to see some of you and then getting to see these projects play out. Ms. Kelly, great job with this, as always. I really want you to teach me how to use the chatter chat one. Think I might need that for my end-of-year address. We'll see. If Miss Molly can help me with that one. And Ms. Reed and Ms. McCarthy, great job. So, thank you, everyone.
And I'd like to thank the stars of the show, Jackson and Edon and Hannah. Thank you so much. You did a fabulous job. That's a good job. I'm so proud of all of you. I told you, you were the chosen few for this time around. So you did a great job. And to the Mrs. Reed and Ms. McCarthy and Mrs. Kelly, thank you so much for all the hard work that you put into tonight's presentation. I really do appreciate it. So, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All I can say about a budget webinar is Michael Connelly's face with the chatter. I think that's a better question here tonight. Okay, so we're going to move on. The other guests here tonight, so we'll start with my DC alum, you know, fellow DC alum, Amy Wackowitz is here. Talking about the core measurements presentation. So, Amy.
Hi, everybody. If anything goes wrong, you on my end, please tell me to and I'll shut off my camera as well. Hello, everybody, and hello, everybody watching through the New York cam. Mr. Buckley, next year, when you do your EOR, I'm hoping that you add to your list of positions, Mrs. Ambriano, to be, again, the official representative of the school committee to the Coalition. Because she's been wonderful and it's been great to have that consistency of representation. So, thank you so much. I want to start off with that. And I'm here with good news. And that's really nice to have. I believe Dr. Daley has the presentation, or shall I do it? Dr. Daley?
Yeah, I got it here. I just got it put up there.
Thank you.
Everyone?
Yeah, we'll find out when we do the subcommittee. We'll have the Coalition on there again.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So today, as we do every year, I report to you first the outcomes related to our core measurement. And for those of you who are not familiar with it, each year we collect information. Specifically, we're required to collect four questions about four substances. However, in North Reading, we actually collect those questions across five substances. Because unlike the Feds, we separate vaping out into its own particular substance. And that's because it has different behaviors. So we've been doing that for about two years now. And if you can believe it, we are in the last few months of our Drug-Free Communities Grant that started five years ago. The school committee back then was very supportive of that. And you could continue to support that. We literally would not have had a successful application five years ago without your support. I just completed the application for our final five years. It is extremely credit. So I'm going to ask all of you, whether or not to cross your fingers for us. Because from my understanding, this year, they're going to award only 100 grants across the entire country. And for the first time ever, there was a question there about need base. And that was not there before. So I'm a little concerned by it. I think we have a great application, specifically in the areas of where we collaborate. I talked to, I'm in a cohort of people who do my job across the nation. And I know that this is something that a lot of places struggle with. They don't talk to the schools, they don't talk to the police. And I'm happy to report that we have strong relationships across all required 12 sectors and beyond. So I'm thrilled about that. The one thing I will throw on this committee's radar is that moving into our next and final five years, we're hoping for more student participation and student representation in the Coalition and hear their voices more. So today, I am presenting you with the culmination of five years of data. And without spoilers, it's good news. And I know a bunch of you have some handouts. So let me begin. If I can ask Dr. Daley to, thank you. This year, as we do every year, we go to you. We ask for your support on the digital version of the survey. And I'll be there, so thank you. And what I want to point out is that we had a pretty good response rate, although it was down from previous years. And that's something we'll continue to look at. And unfortunately, the 11th grade participation only had two participants. And so we're not able to include their information comparatively. You will see historical data by 11th grade, but not this year. Because obviously, two kids and not statistically that's correct.
Amy, is there a reason that the 11th grade was only two? Did it not go up?
I can't just say, yeah. It was this, you know, we tried to figure, you've got to remember, this was done during the hybrid learning and all that. And it was very challenging. So we really wanted to get both upper and lower high school. And so Mr. Hayne and Mr. LaPrette targeted specifically 12th grade and used their Stiv Gov class. There wasn't really the opportunity to do 11th in quite the same way. So these two students were probably folks that work closely with you, Miss Wackowitz, I'd say. It wasn't that they refused. It was created for the seniors.
And hopefully, moving forward, we won't have that exclusion again. So I'm excited.
I'm hoping it's a much better environment for this next year. Yes, exactly.
And just to refresh everybody's memory, we tend to begin the process in February with our presentation to you. And the survey is administered between March and April every year. So before I dive into this data here, I just want to point out that you'll see 2018, 19, and 21. And that's for a couple of reasons. And the first I want to point out is that we did collect data in 2017. However, I cannot include that in comparative data because we took that data a different way. And I really want to stick with apples to apples as much as possible. Although I do have that information available, if you're interested. We used a paper survey back then, if you can remember. And before we went all digital. And the response rate was far less. The other thing I want to point out is that you don't see 2020 information. And that's because, again, right, you know, it was, oh my gosh, I think we were looking at it a month after COVID hit. And that response was not valid. So I don't even include it in this. But what I do want to show you is the down slope. And so what I'm excited to report is that alcohol in particular had a pretty significant jump from 2019 to 2021. Now, keep in mind, we obviously are going to look deeply into the causes of these declines. As you know, we use seven strategies to combat all of these substances. However, with the reduction of peer-to-peer contact, we do think that had a significant impact in the decline of substance use in 2021. So interestingly here, we see something also. In tobacco, we see a slight incline. Now, this is actually something that we were anticipating. If you recall my past presentations on vape use, across the nation, we are starting to see unfortunate trends going up related to traditional tobacco use. Tobacco use being separate from vape use. And this is because we had more than ever in 2019, 2018, and 2020, a high number across the country of young people using vapes. As more and more laws came into play, and especially in Massachusetts, which is very ahead of the curve in terms of bylaws and restrictions around age-appropriate things and all that, we felt, unfortunately, students, young people, addicted to nicotine. And nationally, including the CDC, we anticipated a spike, a stronger spike than we saw, but a spike nonetheless in traditional tobacco use. As vape products became harder and harder to get, obviously, that need for nicotine was going to not go away. And so we anticipated a spike in traditional tobacco use. We're hoping to combat that again. That was something that has not been on our radar for several years, but, including across the nation. But I'm happy to report it's not as big of a spike as we thought. Marijuana has gone down as well. Thrilled about this. Especially as we're starting to see an increase in the potency of marijuana, in vapable marijuana. This is something I could spend hours on with you. Having case after case, as you know, I work in the police department, of marijuana-induced or THG-induced psychosis. This is scary. This is unpredictable. And oftentimes, the person who is using does not remember what they're doing at the time. As we see the increase of potency, we are starting to see an increase of THG psychosis. And this is something that is extremely concerning to us. As the perception of risk or harm goes down among youth. Now, why is the perception of risk or harm going down across youth? Because of legalization. Why would our government legalize something that is harmful to us, is the argument. So although I'm glad to see the decline here, I am very concerned about potency levels. Our X drugs. So just to clarify, this is related to, the way we phrase the question, as you remember, is prescription drugs not prescribed to you? So this would be something like Xanax, any anti-anxiety medication, any sort of opiate. And again, these numbers are very low. Especially if you look at the drop from 2018 to 2021, where we raised significant concerns and raised our education gains significantly about the challenges and the risks related to taking prescription drugs not prescribed to you. So I'm very happy to see that decline. And the vape numbers. So we only started separating vape use out in 2019. That's why you only see two numbers there. Generally speaking, we've seen some pretty dramatic decline. So what I want to point out to you is among 12th graders, from one out of four kids, basically, down to 16%. That is statistically a very dramatic jump. But I want to caution everybody because our, again, our answer rate is not apples to apples. You know, even in this year, we had a little bit less. But it's on the right trend, so we're going to take it. And this is the one that I really want to congratulate everybody listening to this. And even if you've had nothing to do with the Youth Prevention Coalition, you are part of the community, and this is a community win. It really, really is. After five years, was that money well spent from the Feds? And I am thrilled to say, yes, I think it has been. Not just the numbers we see here, but in building relationships and helping educate not just the kids, but the families, the parents, the teachers. Across the five years, we've had a handful of teachers who've joked to us asking about concerns related in their own families. It's just been an amazing reach out and given us the opportunity to have this voice in the community. Whether we get the next five years or not, I am hopeful that we will continue this work within the North Reading Police Department and across the Coalition. We do have a sustainability plan that was led up by Dr. Daley, I'm sure many of you know. And we had a lot of input related to how we could sustain this, even if we don't have a full-time Amy on staff. So this is the overall picture, and this is the big one I wanted to share with everybody. Congratulations. It's a big community win. I can't wait to, you're my first stop on the PR train. But I can't wait to share this with everybody. I'd like to share a couple more slides, though. And we talked briefly about this, that this is the perception of risk or harm has changed. And again, you'll see marijuana, little bit of a change. What we do is, this is a percentage of students who said they perceive the substance as moderate or a great risk. Marijuana, tobacco, and sometimes going on in 10th grade, it's very interesting. Especially because 10th grade does have health class. So that's something that we'll look into. That's my mom calling, sorry. The other thing that we track is the student's perception of risk or harm around vaping products. And for our purposes, just for informational purposes, this is not something we report to the federal level. We do separate non-nicotine products out from regular nicotine products, as well as CBD. And the reason we do that is because it does have a different addictive nature. However, we've learned that a lot of students who think they are vaping non-nicotine are in fact getting nicotine. So that's something that we'll continue to look at. Okay, winding down, the last slide. And this is something that we did start seeing a change in. Where you'll see the most popular from 2021 versus 2018. This is where students report using substances. Again, number one place, obviously out of school. But this is the first year we did start seeing people admit to using things in school. We also learned that the number one source of substances, or substances that young people are accessing, is from an older sibling or family member. So an example of that would be your 21-year-old sister came home from college and you asked her to buy a six-pack for you. This is the number one source. And so it's not surprising that the majority of use happens out of school and at somebody else's house where they're not supervised. And I think that might be it. I'm going to open it up for questions. Sorry, I did give you national data. Sorry about that. So we do compare North Reading against national data. Nationally, they only collect information for eighth, 10th, and 12th grade. We use it against the monitoring, the future study, and by the University of Michigan. So this is 2020 numbers versus our 2021. Now, green is where we are better than the national average. And orange is where it's a real close race. And red is where we perform worse than the national average. Those are drug separated. Thank you. I'll open it to questions.
Amy, comment on the questions? I'll begin, Amy. And thank you for your hard work on this. I think my concern on this is, of course, what does this really show? Because I worry that access to data was so limited last year that, I don't know. I mean, and I also wonder if, you know, I think there's been lots of reports on alcohol use among parents probably being higher. Because the students have been home seeing their parents do it. And so I wonder what that long-term means. But again, we can only evaluate what we can evaluate. But I hope upon this trend at this stage that it's not so related to access. But I fear that access has a lot to do with this.
That's just an attitude. And unfortunately, this has left us with a lot more questions. To your point, you know, you're speaking about just one point, being accessed. But attitudes, behaviors, what they see as the parents do at home. Would your parent, one of the questions is, would your parents be upset if they found out you were using fill-in-the-blank substance? And, you know, changes in that can be tracked over time. Parental attitudes about marijuana and alcohol specifically, I can tell you, are relatively casual compared to national data in North Reading. So, you know, the perception of it being is, as long as my kid doesn't drive home, as long as my kid gives up the keys and it's safe for them to use, I did it as a kid, so what's the big deal? And that is something that we're going to continue to track in the next five years to collect more in-depth data. And it might involve some focus groups, some parent surveys, things like that. Because we do hear that anecdotally. We do hear it at the police station. You know, I used, I'm fine. My kid gave up the keys, so what's the big deal? You know, those are all things that are concerning.
And the only other comment that I have is, I think North Reading is very fortunate to have you. I think there's been lots of discussion about, you know, trying to look at, you know, within the police department, getting people that are focused on substance abuse. They will be granted grants and be funded. I also know from, you know, discussions with, you know, finding a planning team and going to platform meetings. But there is a lot of desire to, you know, keep you around here, no matter what. And I just feel that regardless of what happens with the grants that we're able to, you know, staying in this program. And I think that this is something that, you know, especially because, like, in the schools, we're really looking at when everybody comes back, what is the gap between, you know, having the gap between the kids that are getting it and the kids that haven't challenged it, haven't grown. And I just worry that, you know, if things look like a downward slope and people see that, that they sort of ease off on it. But we could see a huge rebound, that'd be my concern. And so I feel that we can find ideal ways that we can get some kind of grant money for but either way that we can support your efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will just mention, too, next year, thank you to the elementary principals. And Cynthia Cohn being the facilitator, and Mrs. Ambriano, that will be swimming further upstream for upstream prevention and getting into 5th grade, starting in the fall. So we're thrilled about starting that upstream prevention even earlier. I think that's so important to, you know, the earlier the better, within reason and age appropriateness. And the other thing I'll mention, just because you mentioned supporting the police station, and let me use this as a plug for anybody who might be listening at home, watching the video. If you know anybody that needs any help with substance abuse or mental health, we have a full-time mental health physician at the police department. No questions asked. She will connect you to resources. Her name is Laura Miranda. She's free. She'll talk to you about, you know, matching your insurance with treatment, whatever you need. And it's all confidential. So reach out to me and I'll connect you, or reach out to her directly from the police department. And we're going to continue to promote her across the community as a great resource.
Thanks again for presenting tonight. And thank you for all that you do for us. Amy's a big part of my parent advisory committee. She's on so many different groups across the district. And has been so a great partner and friends of the Um, and has been so a great partner and, and friend to the schools and supporter of our kids for so many years, so thank you for all that you do, Amy.
Thank you, it's absolutely my pleasure, I look forward to, you know, supporting, uh, the parent groups financially too with some grant money moving forward to get some speakers that, that they really want to see in there, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Dr. McKay, you're up to the Yale University discussion.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right, I've had some problems with the speaker on this one, it's a new computer, so I'm hopeful that I figure the problems out. Again, thank you for having me tonight. Um, Amy's always a tough, tough person to follow, she does so well, but I must say, those little school labradors were amazing. Where else can you throw in a Van Halen song? The Night Beast, I mean, that was so much fun to watch, so that's just some great work that, that I got to see from another school. So I'm definitely gonna take some ideas from that and bring it over to the hood for sure, that was excellent. Um, so tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about, um, a Yale research study that I'd like to participate in. Um, and the origins of it are, you know, as we, as we start to transition back from not being in school and I'm starting to reflect a lot on the social emotional well-being of everyone, and then I always have to like fade back to my own, my own drive to always have a data point. So when we make decisions, we use data-driven decision-making, we really use, try to find, you know, why are we doing what we're doing? What data point is pointing towards what we're doing? So I really want to start to, you know, tear out instruction, I really want to start reflecting on our growth opportunities for social emotional learning. So we have a lot of great things in place, but we really haven't, um, been measuring them to the degree to which I'd like. So as I started to conduct some research with Dr. Mansfield on this and try to like better our practice, I came across this Student Emotion Regulation Assessment Study that Yale University is designing. And their timeline is, is that they need to close, um, and Patrick, I'll finish on this slide, this slide's good. Um, that they need to close out by June first. So basically what this, this is, is the assessment is the CERA, and it, it, it measures sixteen age appropriate, it, it presents sixteen age-appropriate vignettes. Um, there's two versions, there's an elementary version, and then there's like a six through twelve version, obviously we'll be doing up through the grade five. Each vignette, um, students go through, there's one on the next slide, I believe, Dr. Daley. There's an example, so this one is the primary school one. That first picture, it says Dylan and his friends are deciding what game to play at recess. The next picture is Dylan has a lot of ideas for the games he would like to play, but his friends ignore his ideas and pick a game that he doesn't want to play. Dylan is feeling angry, and then it asks four questions, asks how he would respond. And they, they would do that sixteen times, and then that data would be used to generate, um, some reports that we're gonna see as we, we go through. So the reports would measure these eight areas, so the eight areas that the, the, that are measured by the CERA are avoidance and escape, distraction, emotional support seeking, experiencing the emotion, problem-solving, reappraisal, rumination, and somatic relaxation. Um, and then each one of those is coded on how the student would respond. So if you still go forward to the next slide, there are reports, so obviously this is, um, they're trying to calibrate their data. This is a research study to really finalize this report at Yale University. And they are not sharing individual student data, which is, you know, really not what I'm looking for at this point. They're more sharing aggregated data on the emotional regulation strategies that students use in those hypothetical situations for a school level and grade level. I'm, I'm definitely, so on the next slide, um, is a sample of the school-wide report. Um, I'm, yeah, as the leader of the school, I'm very interested in that. Um, I'm more interested than the next report, the grade level report. So then this would enable me to really some target some instruction. So if we looked at a whole school report and there was a pattern of behavior or a pattern of a strength or weakness, that would be super interesting to me. I was like that person who really loves to look at data. But this slide becomes important for me for putting them out of planning. So basically what I've been working with Dr. Mansfield on is, how do we target instruction to grade levels on specific coping skills? And this will give me the data that I've been looking for, for a few years to really target what we're doing, rather than just randomly assigning a social emotional learning lesson. So if we go through like our open circle and we do an open circle, we typically follow right through the book in order, as opposed to really targeting. When we target an instructional lesson from an open circle, we do it in response to an event. And, and that's that reactive piece that I'm not really always a fan of, I'm like more of that proactive approach. This will enable me to get the data and be more proactive with my instructional practices. Next slide. So I kind of already talked a little bit about like that data-driven decision-making model that we always have, so we need a data point. We really need to look at data to make decisions, we really lack the data in this domain. This, this assessment would give us the data, um, for us to implement instructional practices. This would like, I'd like to do that this year, so that'll enable me to plan over the summer to start for the next school year. Um, and that'll allow me to inform my practice. Next slide. Um, again, so this is a computer-based assessment, it's grades one through five. Um, there is a parent notification on the left-hand side, it's just basically, you know, this has been approved by the Yale University Institution Review Board. Um, no harm to any students, we're just collecting data, um, and we're providing your school with the data to, you know, use to improve what they do. And then there's an opt-out, that parents can choose to opt-out their child. So that's kind of what we really wanted to do at the hood school, so I wanted to share that with you tonight, and I appreciate the time and just want to open up to any questions.
Diana.
Um, Mr. McKay, I think you said this, but I just didn't know if you could repeat, and you did. You're only looking at it in aggregate, right? You would never drill down to the individual student level?
So that, that is correct, we're, we're gonna look at whole school first. I'm, I'm really not super interested in whole school unless there's a pattern of behavior within the whole school. Then that would be like something that I'd really like pique my interest, but, you know, for instructional programming, planning, it would be grade level. Um, you know, definitely coming back from the pandemic has caused me to reflect a lot on how, I've always looked at how students interact at recess, um, and really try to diagnose problems. This would actually give me some really concrete data as to try to figure out why a certain thing may become a certain thing with a certain grade level. So just grade level data.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just wondering if it would be a continual thing that you're going to do year for year, or is it a kind of one that does?
Um, so I've actually spent a lot of time trying to, how do we respond to a given situation? And like, how does the social emotional learning curriculum that we have in place, try to really dug tail into those responses? So one of the book studies that I'm hoping to do over the summer is Permission to Feel by Mark Brackett, and he's on Yale University as well. So I'm wondering how much correlation there is between the data that we're receiving in the study to the interventions and strategies that are offered in this book. Um, so the data collection would be a one-time thing for this year. Um, if they were to ask to do it again, and we found it, you know, definitely beneficial, then I would talk to Dr. Daley and seek approval again. But this would be a one-time shot for now, just to kind of really hone in our instruction for, you know, returning to school next year.
Dr. McKay, something I'll say, so a lot of discussion last few weeks ago on the role of schools, and you know, all I can say is, reading this, I didn't follow most of this, and I'll be very honest with you. Like, I appreciate having people that look at this, because that is not how I think, you know? And it's like, it's, you know, I appreciate having somebody that can want to get the data and look at how they can put this into, you know, actionable items, because it's not how I think, you know? And I, I appreciate that we have people in this district that are looking at, you know, how to educate our children in so many different ways. Because, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know, begin to know how to do that. And so I just, again, I appreciate that you are, you know, trying to get the data and trying to use it meaningfully, because it's not how I think, and, you know, I, I would love to come up with some smart questions to ask, but I think. Dr. Daley?
Yeah, before we decide, I just want to say thank you to Dr. McKay for this very thorough presentation. We had, um, the Super Tennis Association had Dr. Brackett present, um, earlier this year, and we all participated. We've, many of us, uh, read the book or taken the course, and it's just, it's a great topic and the mood meters and all those things we see throughout the middle school. So different schools are, are using different aspects of this, um, but I was so excited when he brought this to my attention as something that he had, uh, gained some interest in, I think just could be something that will have a lot of interest across the district and we'll see the results there. So it's something that, you know, I think if this works well, we probably could explore in the future, um, if that does, uh, extrapolate for next year, so, very good.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me tonight, and, and, you know, I, I do appreciate you squeezing me in, I just, I know that the timeline is tight, and I just, I felt that if we missed this opportunity, it'd be one of those things that I regret that we didn't like really take that on this year, so, thank you again for having me.
So do we, to vote for, yeah?
So I understand a motion to approve the administration of Yale University study at the school. I, so move. A second?
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? And this is, again, this is just where I defer to the educators and the administrators that we have, I think instructors don't get on these things. This is not, you know, anything that I'm involved in, so I'm, you know, I think your past and, your past performance really just, you know, we have faith in, but eventually, so. Yeah, sure.
Um, is there a reason why we're not looking at doing it at the other elementary schools as well?
I, I can kind of answer that, so this became, this came quick down the highway, this came from me doing some research. I, I ended up connecting with Merediths from Yale. Cynthia Conant, um, did participate in one of the meetings with us, and, and we definitely did say that, um, this should be a benefit across schools. We actually spent more time talking about like the, the linear, the middle school and the high school, and then our timeline just became very tight, and then the Meredith's timeline from Yale. It, it just didn't allow us the opportunity to spend any time moving it forward. I've talked to both of the elementary school principals about this in, in our elementary principal meetings, they're definitely interested. Um, we're all at different places with different things, so it, it might be one of those things that it's great to start it at the hood and then, and then spread it, much like we had talked about with those makerspaces earlier today. Um, and then I definitely have connected a lot more so with Kathy O'Connell on this, um, and she's definitely very excited to do it. I'm actually sharing this presentation with her tomorrow, and that would be the next step for me, is to kind of like work with her on it, um, but also share it with the other elementary principals. So it's definitely, if we had more time, it would have been more spread across the schools as opposed to just the hood, but we really got in late on the opportunity.
Yes, you could consider it a pilot.
Yeah, that's kind of how we're gonna look at it, and, and if it works out really well, then be well, and if it doesn't, then we'll deal accordingly as well too.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Rich and a second by Chris, and we'll do a roll call vote. Rich, hi, Chris, hi, Diana, hi, Denise, hi, Diana, as well, half the side zero, after approval, Dr. McKay.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated, I'll fill you in on the results.
Excellent.
Thank you, Glenn.
Take care, Dr. Daley, thank you.
Hi, this is everybody watching, basically, so. We'll go back to the top, just to, any update on interns working or are there interns who are returning to school? Are there people that are still tuning in for that, Dr. Daley?
Sure, just as an update, a few things, I sent out some correspondence, uh, today about, um, an opportunity for student vaccination clinics, these are completely optional, they're after-school, um, but they are available for anyone who wants them. I'm actually hearing, when I met with the student reps today, they were, all four of them had all, uh, been vaccinated, which is exciting. So we're hearing there's a good number of students at the high school that are involved, but this is not, just an additional opportunity for folks that want to take advantage. It'll be run by the town in, in cooperation with the local pharmacy. Mr. Bracy is very helpful to bring that forward, um, very quickly, we kind of turned this around, and we will have some of our school nurses assisting as well, so that's, you know, familiar face down there as well, so yes, sir.
How many slots will be available total?
I believe, I believe it's like four hundred per night, so we're, we're gonna far exceed the need. Um, as mine said, I think it's fifteen appointments per time slot, so we're gonna have some large tents down there at the bachelor school.
Pretty much, I'd imagine.
I, I, I would imagine so, yeah, because like I said, some people have already been doing it outside, so it's only twelve and up, the Pfizer vaccine. Um, but I think that will be, um, good. So just to be very clear again, it's not anything we're requiring at school, it's not that at all. We got a few parents saying we don't want our children to receive it, that's not what this is, this is just an opportunity for, um, for those who want to take part.
I think, I think it's great thing that by the access, oh, they want to do it, so, excellent.
And I think only maybe some people concerned is promotion of it in school, like almost shaming it, you know? The parents want to make the choice, maybe want to make sure there's no promotion of it to children, especially the younger ages, like down to like twelve and thirteen in school. So I, I wouldn't assume that that was the case, but, you know, just.
Sure, yeah, it's definitely an opportunity, and, um, I know there's gonna be a lot of questions about this. I haven't, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I haven't heard one way or the other about any kind of requirement. I know some districts have made a, um, a decision to move that way. My, my recommendation would be that we, uh, await to see, you know, what's coming out from the state. I mean, if the state makes a requirement, as they did with the flu shot, which they then, um, pulled back at the eleven dollar, um, we would have to follow according to that, but at this time, I, I would recommend, you know, I think the, the basic message is, um, you know, from, from the governor's office is trying to get as many people as vaccinated as possible, bring our numbers down, and that's what we're seeing, which brings us to, I think, our second topic of the night, which is the, oh, please, yeah. Yeah.
I didn't quite hear the answer to this, but are you gonna be communicating about this with students directly or just through the parent?
I do, we did communicate to high school students directly, um, today, just so they're, they're aware, and the, the, the information was that this was out and that they need to talk to their parents if they're interested.
But I understand your question, the concern is that you're, if you're promoting it to students, that there might be some kind of, uh, a chance for people to feel uncomfortable, so I thought.
Yeah. I think that's gonna exist whether it's this clinic or any clinic, right? It's just the concept of, is it okay to not be vaccinated, and that's a, that's certainly a discussion in, in, uh, with adults too, right? So, um, but we, we are gonna support, the board of health absolutely wants everyone vaccinated, and that's why we're trying to help provide more opportunities for it, so.
The way it's working out is not gonna be that like, the whole seventh grade class is going down right now because of that.
Nope, it's got nothing to do with school, it's just, it's just time slots after school. It happens to be at the school, and it's definitely targeted towards our community to make sure they have opportunities, so that's what it is, yeah.
So for that, I'm probably the captain, but I hear the, hear the reasoning, but because it's after school, it's not like, you know, everybody that doesn't want to do it right here, we're all gonna go down another road.
Right. Yep, that's why we, we definitely went with the after-school, the three to seven, when the, the second dose would also be available. And what they said was, anyone who received a first dose from anywhere could sign up for their second dose through our, through our local offering as well. So if you had to drive a bit for your first one, you could now do the, the local for the second, so that's, that's another opportunity, so. And we'll see what the numbers, uh, the numbers allow, so. I think there's a lot more, it seems to have a lot more slots, um, than when we do the flu shots. Those were, those were much tighter and a little bit smaller, uh, scope, so this should, uh, certainly meet everyone's need. The, the, uh, the second item that's related is that, you know, just came out today, we had no advance notice of some of these changes, but the governor did open up a lot of, um, different requirements, so the Department of Ed quickly followed with, um, some guidance. The, the main impact would be mask-wearing, um, outside, so during recess, physical education classes and outside learning. Students no longer need to wear masks. It's still being recommended that adults wear masks outside if they're not able to physically distance. Um, and we need some clarification around what that means, three foot, six foot, whatever that means. Any adults that work in a school, yeah, yeah. Students and staff at this time are still required to wear a mask indoors. The physical sharing of equipment, so right now, we can't play activities in, in, uh, recess or phys ed class where you bounce a ball from one person to another. The phys ed teachers have been so creative in coming up with ways to do this and using, um, you know, playing highlight or something where you throw in the ball and you, you're not actually touching, um, the ball itself. So some of those restrictions will be relaxed, some of the cleaning restrictions. will be relaxed. Some of the cleaning restrictions, um, are more about the touch points as opposed to every single desk, every single surface. Um, so some of these things, it's not, you know, it's not going to be necessarily a light switch. Tomorrow will be very different. We're going to ease into some of them, but you may start to see, uh, students outside during recess without the mask, which I think a lot of folks, um, students, staff and families are going to be very happy about. I did send out a, a note though, because there are people on the other side, people who, you know, were reluctant to send their children back at all. And now that they are coming back and realizing that, you know, students aren't going to have masks on, it might be a little bit challenging. But students, um, would have the option to continue to wear their masks if they choose. We're not going to tell them they, they have to, you know, take the mask off either. So I think, you know, they can make that choice for themselves, um, certainly through the rest of the school year, unless we get other guidance otherwise. But I don't see any reason why that couldn't continue. And as you can imagine, the, the events for seniors, you know, we had, I, the second this came out, uh, I was staying with Mr. LaPrette and we had a, you know, senior representative saying, well, what about prom? And how does this impact, you know, who can go to prom? And how many numbers? And what about event? What about that event? So it's certainly going to have an impact on a lot of the things that we're, we're planning. Um, and so there's additional conversations that we need to have with the board of health, with the administration, with the facilities that we're using. But this does certainly open up, um, a lot. I mean, from what I'm hearing, Fenway Park and TD Garden are back to full capacity after the end of this month. That, that's a definite, uh, major step forward. It's good news. And as I mentioned in my note, I have to trust that the team of doctors that have been advising the governor all year are basing this on data, basing this on the most current science. And so it's going to be hard for us to trust, um, that we can move forward with this. But all indicators are that we can, we can see this as a positive sign, moving in the right direction. It certainly helps for me to reframe, um, what the fall will look like if we're able to make these adjustments in the spring. So I, I know that I've heard from some families and parents that are concerned about mask wearing and the like. And I think that, um, this is certainly a move in the right direction for those families that are concerned.
Just two, one, one question, one comment. The question, just to be very clear, so, and I know, I know some of them will be rolled out, but in terms of recess and, you know, physical education that's outside, the school list are still hanging with the kids on the name right away, right? Is that any other discussion that has happened or anything like that?
That's my, that's my feeling. It could happen as soon as tomorrow. Um,
And just, my comment was just funny because I, I saw, I was literally walking back from school with him and I was greeting someone at school and I, I thought he was going to be super excited about the mask. And he was like, wait, do we get balls back at recess now?
Yeah.
And I was wondering if his number one thing was like, can we get a ball back at recess now? And I'm like, well, I, I don't know that yet, actually.
Yeah. I think it would be. So again, I would say it could happen as soon as tomorrow. I, I think we need to leave some of that up to the individual teachers and, and principals to make sure it's going to roll out safely. But we certainly, it is, um, it is able to, to begin. So, well, you know, it would have been great to have a little more notice, a little more planning, but, uh, we're very used to this. Uh, I believe there's a, there's a call on Wednesday about the order that goes into effect tomorrow that we heard about today. So that's, that's sort of the order that we've been addressing things all year. So.
That was what I was going to ask about the sports.
Yeah.
For the sports teams, are you going to allow them to take their mask?
Yeah, we have, I, I believe we still need a little clarification around that because the youth activities are unmasked. I'm not exactly, it's not a hundred percent clear about the high school sports and activities. EEA guidance has not been updated yet. I would imagine they're kind of shuffling right now to try to make those adjustments. Um, it's certainly trending in that direction. So I, I would, I would assume that the students today probably wore masks as they have been. Um, but that probably will, will start to shift and change a little bit. So, it's nice outside. I think, uh, people are getting comfortable and they're a little bit, yeah, it's warm and it's, but it's also, you know, as more folks are getting vaccinated or things are happening and, and things are opening up, I think it's a very good sign.
So are we getting a limitation on, 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 on outside right now or not?
We do not. We do not. We have had, um, we are still, we're, we're recommending for people, and we're still, we still do have a requirement for contact tracing. So we're still having people fill out a form and that's keeping the numbers centered. Essentially, you have a limitation based on maintaining six foot. So we're trying to maintain the overall numbers by limiting groups to four. Um, but we have, we haven't received any issues with that process as far as complaints that not enough people are getting into seat. We're going to, we're hosting a marching band competition and, uh, indoor concert where, and our, um, play is going to open up as well. So right now we have a process for those number of adults. Now, I'm sure there'll be questions. That's another question about marching band and, and band and chorus, what that looks like when it's outdoors, um, in masks, because that, that is a little different because they're, they're still blowing and or singing. Um, so I'm sure there'll still be additional questions that I'm going to get over the next few days. But, um, for the most part, we wanted to get that information out right away, um, to families. And I think we're moving in the right direction as a Commonwealth.
I know we're talking, uh, on our committee meeting, I don't think we're talking. So that wasn't what we have, we're clarity or not?
I can guarantee that they will have the latest data from across the country. They're, they're so in tune with that, Ms. Suster and, uh, Ms. Kane. Uh, Mr. Owens has already emailed me about asking questions as well. So, um, we've done a great job all year of keeping kids learning, playing their instruments, singing, and doing everything safely outdoors, even when it was very cold out. Um, and we're going to move forward with, with shows for families and parents. And the more, you know, as many folks as we can safely fit inside, we will. And they've always said, you know, we're able to do it for sports. We need to be able to do it for, for performing arts. And we've insisted the same. There still appears to be some different standards for indoor versus outdoor activities and that accounts for that difference. So.
And I, I would just call up, it's been challenging for everybody, but, you know, the physical education and performing arts teachers, that they, they've had a hard time this year. And they, they put a lot into it. And I know my son is doing work at school just because it kind of made it during school.
Yep.
Pretty much proud of that school that they wouldn't have been doing otherwise. And it really, it really is challenging. And so it, it, I think everybody has hardships this year, but really those, those individuals that have, have had, I think, some a hard time. You know, I appreciate all of it.
The creativity, when I walk by the, the middle school cafeteria with all their individual tables that they brought in for lunch, and that's the phys ed space, and they had to go elsewhere, but on rainy days, they're in there. And the creative things they've come up with, with some of the balloon volleyball over a table. I mean, they just really, I don't know, you've probably seen some of the Michael, just when you walk by, it's like, and you, you ask them what, and it's things that they've adapted or come up with. And the kids are still, you know, coming up with games, using strategies, doing, you know, working on the standards just in a creative way. So that necessity being the mother of invention is, is very true, um, with our, with our educators here and our students. Uh, just quickly on the, the summer programs, you know, Mr. Kline has been, um, working very hard to develop programs for, um, our students who are most at need and at risk for this year. And so there'll be more information coming out soon about some acceleration academies later in the summer. Um, we are going to, as I mentioned, I believe here, but I'll just say it again, the pool testing program will continue. And I have received some questions from folks, you know, if my child's vaccinated, do I need to continue with pool testing? And we would still continue the pool testing with staff and students for those that are interested. Just, um, the, the state and the department of health still recommends that you continue with pool testing as well, just to, to, you know, safely identify positives. Our case counts are way down, if you've seen, um, from where they were last month. We've got, um, less than five right now for the whole month of May, which is great, versus about thirty-eight back in April. Um, so that's, uh, and, and the staff counts are even further down. So, and we've got, um, we're coming to the end. I've got about five or six more staff members that I'm aware of. If you remember that they, they self-identified about getting vaccinated, but we had, um, over eighty percent of our staff were vaccinated. And there's about five or six more. My list keeps getting smaller and smaller for the letters that we're sending out. So, um, I think, I think we've had great opportunities and, uh, those who wanted to get vaccinated have been able to do so.
Part of what you said, the letter being sent out is passing.
The letters, yeah, the process we've changed, you know, we were, we're, when someone, uh, is fully vaccinated, they no longer need to be, um, completing the daily health screen of the staff members. They no longer need to be in a full quarantine if there's someone positive in the classroom. And so there's a few other items such as that. So when they indicate that they're fully vaccinated, they get a letter from us that indicates, um, that they are, um, that they are away from those requirements. And so that was our way of soliciting some input about, about that. So I think there's some people that may be vaccinated, didn't want to complete the form. There may be some that just haven't done it. But overall, as I said, the numbers are very high. And I, I'm highly confident that those that wanted to or were able to get, so were able to find the opportunity. We were worried about that at one point. I think that, um, you know, we talked about the, sort of the, the climate or the way people felt, the anxiety levels, and that's come way, way down. And I feel like, you know, it's been, it's been very good. We're not quite back to normal, but it's feeling a lot, a lot closer.
I think the market is going to be practiced, right? And more, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
People know, just don't know, but I'm trying to, I think that people might be, um, listening to first, uh, why don't we go to the school choice vote right now?
Sure.
And then we can do the stuff, the assignment, the schedule and all the other things. Do you want to lead us into the discussion of the choice vote?
Sure. This is a, uh, an annual, um, discussion that we have. I just want to read from the item here. It's very well written.
Can we do it again? I appreciate you sending over the, the data you want to pass through.
Sure. So that, so school choice is a, you know, it's a hearing we have to open, have a, have a hearing on this decision. So it's, it's sort of assumed that we are school's choice district, but we have a hearing every year to review whether we, we would be, uh, school choice for the following year. By June first of every year, we have to make that decision about which, uh, way to go. This is about opening up the district so that people who are not residents of North Reading would be able to attend. This is not, as some think, this is not the same as being a, you know, a participating in a Metco program or something like that. This is a very different conversation. Um, and so this is, uh, what we provided you tonight is some of the, the reasons why historically, um, we have not been a district. And a lot of this is financial, it's driven by space, it's driven by enrollment, it's driven by, um, you know, how much, uh, room we have in our schools. And so I don't know if there were any questions about the, uh, the document that was shared with you.
I think my comment is, well, we don't care about education. We also, our decision to talk about for education, we can't succeed in North Reading. Unfortunately, sometimes the general, general cost and our duty as well. So I think that, sort of how, how I look at it, like we have to look at it from the lens of what's better than Reading. Oh, wait, since they say they need to go into public hearings, but.
You do.
Probably do.
Yeah.
Down first. So, and we want you to go into public hearings. Maybe it's.
I mean, mostly we, we're hoping public hearing on the school choice.
A second? Okay. I think more than that. Rich?
Hi.
Hi. Diana?
Hi.
Denise?
Hi.
And I as well. Thank you, Cindy. So, just kind of continue, like, yeah, I think, I think our role as, you know, school community members in North Reading needs a way to look at what's invested of the students in our district. And unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't look good. You know, the broader ideas, broader ideas, um, of, you know, education. So I think, you know, looking at that role, I think that the way that school choice works right now is challenging. And a lot of our classes are at the limit where, you know, adding even one or two students is what might mean that we have to add a whole other section or we're, you know, not giving these phones of our, for school community, that was all the fact sizes. So, I agree that's challenging, I think.
Uh, yeah, Rich, I was just saying that if this were part, if this were a part of a more coordinated effort to, to change education outcomes in the state, I think that'd be a different story. It just seems like a piecemeal thing now. I'm not sure the value of games as for the, as Fox and North Reading. Even though, suppose I support the goals that underline, underlie this issue, I guess. Just such a piecemeal approach.
We're discussing public comments on this, I think. Do I have public comments? Any, you have your hand raised? I think that's probably what I did. You tried your yelling and you just record it. Very interesting. That was, that was a valuable share. So, um, okay. So if I, if no more comments, I'll undertake a motion to, I'll undertake a motion of the school choice vote, which, let me create some background. So I undertake a motion to not participate in school choice because the program, as it is presently constructed, ensures that the needs of some children of the Commonwealth cannot.
Okay.
Okay. For the discussion on this, you will, you will all vote. Denise?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I as well. Side zero.
Will there be exit public hearing?
Very much. The next one. You have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Rich?
Hi.
Denise?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I as well. Out of public hearing. Okay. So, no more talking. There you go. God, because we are willing to hear the public opinion, they, they never want to be so. Okay. So, I figure it's only because public group, something amazing that we're willing to serve.
Yeah.
Okay. So, let me go back to the, the assignment. We all have a list of where we're at. This time, this is a separate, we have to do separate motions on each appointment, or can we just kind of decide it and then? Cindy, I don't know if that, that works for you or not. If we just decide who it is and then, or fill it out and then do one motion. This is, we're doing separate, um, roll calls on each one.
She says that's.
That's okay. So why don't we look through the committee assignments right now and just see what people think? Well, we'll just go through it and, you know, we'll make a motion afterward. We'll just have a conversation about where we're at right now. The secondary school building committee, I think that is both Janine and me now, right?
I'm in on.
That's what I'm on now, correct, Dr. Bailey?
Correct.
Thing?
Well, not officially. That's why you're not on there yet listed. Cause it, it has to be named by the select board.
Okay.
We didn't do that. And so there's some reasons for that, um, why it hasn't happened. But I think it would, it would just move. I think you could name your spoke to it on our end. Yeah.
That's what we had decided beforehand. But I think that I would be same, you know, see that if I'm going to pay to that. Obviously, subcommittee, I don't know if people thought of this. You're all, I, I know, why don't we go to, I'm going to just jump out of, I, I know that the I D C, Diana, did that for three years. I know that she's looking to try some different things this year. I don't know if anybody has an interest in the I D C. They tell her, they usually meet at what time?
Around four or four thirty.
Or she?
Yeah.
Okay. It's our one. And, um, you know, you just, because I know you know some of the players, but.
Um, well, it is four because length of your term and my term is up this year. So I don't know. We have to be doing it again next year if I will be out for a year.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's actual an argument, isn't it?
I mean, it's certainly, they need somebody rolling one year. Then you're like, you go for one year, it's even less.
No, it, it might, if you have time, it's not a dream. But where you're on the master community, we can, we can stay, probably kind of go hand in hand a little bit with that. We get to know all the going on down the town. But I mean, I'll take on for a year if someone else has the desire to.
Yeah, I think, I, I have a little bit of interest in it, but I also feel like I find it's planning and some of the other things that I've given a lot of, I don't want to not watch these either. I feel like, I think it's some of the big characters.
Yeah.
In there. So we'll be validated to have represented in there.
Yeah. I'd also be happy to do it. Definitely agree. Take it off Diana's, like, for, for now, three years. You know, it, it, this three-year appointment thing is a little weird, um, not that I'd suggest doing it for three years, but, um, I don't know what people are going to think to you two years.
Well, I think, I think it's just more for ease of ability that they don't have, you know, people changing speed over time, more so than anything, but.
I mean, and it, and it is kind of a long-term view, I think, right? You're not just, you're not just thinking about the decision.
It absolutely does seem a little bit more self-reliant than I am having a lot of these done, and, so I think.
Yeah, a lot of friends on, on something like that, like, does the remote thing, they stay in place? Just a big remote thing.
I think, I also think that Janine has, especially, you know, you, you present a lot of the same people on school building projects, and, and the connection, like people want to know.
Me.
So, if, if you were open to it, I mean, I.
I definitely take it on.
I've heard of you with that, but that, I mean, I thought that, you always said thought, but I think it's going to be like Sharon doing, of finding teams and a better. I don't think that one. Um, I don't know, Rich, what, what, what kind of views, like, the needs that you have right now, if you want to kind of.
Right. I don't know.
The Yankee Swamp.
I like everything that I'm on, so I'm, you keep him on that.
Let's kind of just keep going down there, so, I'll be subcommittee right now, with Janine.
This, you know, two years now, you deserve a break today.
So I'll, I'll, I'll put it this way, I, I enjoy it, if somebody else thinks it's too hot into it, great, I don't want to keep them out, but I also en- enjoy it a lot, and I'm not looking to get off of this, so I'll let anybody else who wants to call this.
I'm not interested in that one at all. Cool. Okay, Janine, you like that?
Yeah.
Okay, applaud it. Diana and Janine.
I would like to.
Yeah, Janine, you like?
Unless somebody goes for it now, unless somebody wants to.
Or if I do that evaluation, though, that I will be happily worked at, so, Janine, Rich, do you enjoy that?
So I, I can say the same thing for, for this event, and again, for, for our, both of them, I, I fully enjoy it, but I've also been on for some time, and I feel anybody that wants them is welcome, and if not, I'm still doing it.
Doing it.
Doing it. Anybody want on, so, budget and finance, we actually have a couple meetings this year.
I'm happy to stay on, it's actually not being productive.
Yeah. And, and, it's, it's, it's a different view, because we do have a budget and finance team, and we have the discussions there, and sometimes it's a little bit challenging there, but it's just, it's another way to get another person into it, you know, that's not always in the mind, finance discussions, and so, and then I feel like I can report back to kind of walk from the one to the other. Contract review, we haven't been doing that, I don't think we have any contract negotiations that are due next year, correct? So, so there, finance.
That's a big one.
Perfect, Rich, if you stay here, Rich, you're the hundred percent.
I do, well, again, if anyone wants to, to, to claim, we'll have to.
Yep, sir, good. So, our PM?
Yeah, I'm just kidding, that's a good, good.
Want to, you want to say it, okay?
Yeah.
It's very easy, you want to, if you're, if you're finding, finding your, maybe it's your, like, chair, and special education parent advisory, and they got to have to stay on it, or, they have a, they should have, or not, I, I, yeah, I like, this is me. Then I guess you remove the contract negotiations, even unofficial committee. Say, if you like that?
You okay with that? So, should we just run to a, a, yes, why don't we do a motion, one motion, and then it's all, I mean, either of them?
Yes.
Uh, I think so. So, I move that committee votes approve all the subcommittee assignments. Secondary school building committee, Janine, DeBriano, Scott Fugley, all pending approval by the board. All the subcommittee, Chris Popple, Bautile, and Janine DeBriano. Athletic subcommittee, Diana Gottwells, and Janine DeBriano. Livation subcommittee, Janine DeBriano, Chris Popple, Bautile. Budget and finance subcommittee, Scott Fugley and Diana Gottwells. Um, contract review subcommittee will remain in play, uh, or inactive. Finance subcommittee, Rich McGowan and Chris Popple, Bautile. More cabinet advisory board, Rich McGowan. Finance spending team, uh, by, by practice, Scott Fugley and Rich McGowan. This was the youth coalition, Janine and DeBriano. Special education parent advisory council, Scott Fugley. Capital, purpose planning committee, Janine and DeBriano.
And, I mean, I still don't feel balanced, it's been a lot. Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, because my schedule is very, very flexible during the workday, so I'm fine. And the secondary school building has been tested since May two thousand and eighteen, so that's kind of like, you know.
And this one's off, I'm saying, it's a little unbalanced.
It's just enough to run next year, whatever's playing.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy, like, if there's one of them that you'd like me to take, because it's happy to, it's a year or something.
No, no.
It's, it's, I, I thought it was in my, I would say something.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second?
Second, any further discussion? So this is kind of, are there any committees that the, that other committees have that we think we need?
That we can then put Janine on?
Uh, disagree with your motion, uh, I don't have the answer, I'll tell my, we, we, we might something we should explore.
Uh, we, we can look at it another time.
That sounds like a good, that's actually a pretty good topic, conversation to have for, uh.
And maybe they need to do the research.
What about committees who are other committees? We, we can always, but I can tell that there's a number of things that are popping around with other, other communities, but, um, if we talk about it later on, we can, okay, so we have a motion, Rich, a second, I think. No further discussion, or vote, Rich?
Hi.
Rich, hi. Diana.
Hi.
Janine.
Hi.
And I as well. Thank you, Captain Five Zero, and I appreciate everybody willing to jump into these assignments, because I think that's the one thing that people don't really realize, that, you know, these meetings can be a little bit long, you know, all kinds of them, but a lot of them happen in, you know, meetings, so, appreciate everybody's hard work, thank you. Okay, now, I'm putting this script right up on the schedule and telling you, you're off this, that, it's going to be a, a, a meeting. Sorry, yes, so, power being scheduled, that's a deal, you want to discuss this a bit?
Sure, I presented, uh, two different dates, um, for the, the topics that need to be shared in July would be the superintendent's goals and the school committee goals, and then, uh, we've, in recent years, had an August meeting as well to talk about reopening for the fall. Um, it was suggested for Monday, July twenty-sixth at six thirty P M, and then August sixteenth at six thirty P M. Uh, but I, I would entertain, uh, any, any ideas or suggestions you have around those dates?
My only discuss, my only thought was, the, August sixteenth is half the date that we could do, if, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, if it looks like it will, if I'm correct, and that we can, for me, over sixty days after that, just worrying about vacation schedules and everything, and it might be easier for, the odds that he can give to the members of the public that may want to attend, if there are any, whether or not we should consider moving every, either moving just the August sixteenth up, or putting both of them off a week, and just so that both of them would be in that sixty day period if people need to attend, but, yeah, I would think that somebody could, just to remind the committee, if we have to be a full person, the fleshwork is not authorized for most participation for members of the committee if they can't be here, um, we can use the fleshwork to authorize that in order to do that, so then it's like, somebody is away that day, they can't participate, not to mention members of the public that may be like, so.
Well, is that, is that the same thing? We, could we continue to offer access to the members of the public, just to listen in and comment? I, I love this restriction on that, um, along with it was also open to the public, uh, uh, if, or personal, you know.
Maybe, maybe we could do that in addition.
But, if, this fiction of members, obviously, are subject to whatever.
Yeah, you have to, you have to either that, so, I mean, I, I just see some flexibility, and, I mean, I think it's one of our container people for that.
So we can do a fair reason.
Yeah, and the thing that we did, like, third day to twelve, or if we did, moved everything up one week or something, it didn't matter to me, that would be my suggestion, if available, perhaps, um, for other people's things, like.
Yeah, I got you on that. I think it's a good argument, I would just suggest, based on, uh, my schedule, Michael's schedule, during the twenty-sixth and holding that one for July would be good, based on our administrative retreat and some other things we're planning those days, um, but if you wanted to move the August date a little bit earlier, uh, to the ninth, maybe, or to.
You're allowed to the ninth, we're grabbing the Thursday.
Yeah, it's, we haven't really talked about that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm driving, I, I don't think you guys don't think you're getting nine, but.
Yeah, Mi- Michael's unavailable the ninth, so would you do the twelfth, or, would you rather go?
You can all be, be, like, same.
You could also be.
Yeah, I mean, why do you remember going in, Janine, to the?
Yeah, I, I both kind of go around.
We're gonna do like, the twelfth, then, the ninth, so that we're free, I'm sure, something called the Thursday end.
Yes.
How about we, that Thursday, August twelfth? So we can put that back, we can, you know, we can change that later on, but, and also, literally, there's nothing going on, we can, we have.
Right. Yeah, I think that, I think that meeting has been sort of that way, I think last year there was no way we weren't meeting in August.
Yeah.
And, yeah, after that, it was typical to the school meeting, the school setting meeting.
Yes.
I think, except moving that, you know, for the August, you know, without meeting in.
I think more here with the, I mean, I, I wouldn't be in here for the summer, but I'll come back a few times, and so, I can kind of come back and be a person. I just want to make sure that we have participation, or if everybody, if somebody's, you know, somebody's work schedule or whatever, somebody's vacation schedule changes, I like the convenience of being able, you know, have people there, and doing that every before.
And if, 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 you know, allowing the, the, going forward?
Not that, but I think that's something we can talk about, and, and, I, I'm, I'm curious if we have any changes, but, like, like Dr. Daley said, the thing, the new guy that came up today, and he's got to kind of be able to figure out, and we'll start emailing other people, yeah, all, all, wait for some of the guys to come out.
I believe part of the reason why some of the states are as of this date, as of that date, is because the legislature needs a little time to figure out what they need to change in that state as well, so.
I think, and I could be wrong on that sixty day thing, I just, I vaguely remember that.
Yeah, I've heard that as well.
For sixty days, and we needed to ask, and, and, ending on that, and so, thank you. Go with that now, here's our message. Okay, so, I actually do this, okay, because we need to go around, better than me.
Sure, I, I guess, move, uh, there's, it's been here, so I move that we schedule a meeting for Monday, July twenty-sixth, and Thursday, August, well, correct?
Anywhere discussed? Rich?
Hi.
Rich? Diana?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
And I as well, five zero, thank you. Okay, you have our business. Janine DeBriano, our.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the extended minutes session, uh, May third, uh, Rich.
Discussion. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I as well, five zero.
I'd like to make the motion to discuss the minutes, uh, the open session for May third, uh, as, uh, uh, Rich. Okay.
Discussion. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich, on it, Rich?
Hi.
And I as well, five zero. Budget update? How are you doing? Okay, this time?
There's no budget update, evening, um, everything is trending, things, the class is, um, you just continue to work on, very focused around the fifteen year closeout. It's, it's, um, that, that, right now, everything is, is being, well, I, I would say the food service program, this closeout, um, the month of April was a small, a small profit, very good, it's even the month of, it's normal times, even the month of April, so, certainly things that, uh, today and last week, with the closeout of the, the monthly tax is, is trending in the right direction, that's hurting, and, and continuing to, 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 to.
Anyone? This staff, this, this, this?
Uh, no, at this time.
I think I'm staffed, and I'm, I'm, I only feel, able to mention this because, uh, that's our council chair, that's going to email to all the parents who are involved in, or that she has, out of the procedure, is she ever people, and so I just want to reach her, oh, and, and, and.
They haven't had the chance to connect, and she's doing very well, so thank you.
Is in donation? Like, I, yeah, actually, maybe assignment as well.
You know what? I love doing this, but I'm happy to share with everybody.
You know, I can't read names, so, I, I, I wish for not, I know that's, I know you do.
I move that the school committee wants to accept the gratitude donation of three thousand five hundred dollars from the North Reading High School Parents Association to benefit senior class in twenty twenty-one celebration of North Reading High School.
Five second? Discussion. Rich?
Hi.
Rich? Hi. Diana?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
And I as well. Okay. Subcommittee updates, uh, these are, uh, made well for presentation, um, it was, it was a story, it was, you know, one of the new presidents is going to be here, uh, meeting very soon, I think, June, he, she took together, and I thought a point about her experiences, uh, in specific, you know, references of resources to use, um, you know, stories that she ever had, and, and, but I thought it was really interesting, if your daughter's ever well, so, and I question I asked at the end, sort of, how her relationship with, you know, her brother, who has special needs, how that is, how, you know, how she's helping with planning going forward, her brother, which is, I thought was very interesting, so, I thought I appreciated you been doing that. Um, do we have any other subcommittees? Upcoming subcommittee, we have finance planning team on May twenty-fifth at eight A M, athletic subcommittee, May nineteenth at one P M, finance subcommittee, May nineteenth at three thirty P M. That's a deal, this great report?
Uh, no, at this time.
Our assignment, there's something to them?
No, at this time.
It's your business, we do have a meeting, eight twenty-five A M, the fourth time meeting, I, you know, remind the people, if we can, it'd be great if we can all attend there, because I'm worried that there might be some amendments made on the, you know, on meeting floor, but they could, they could herself either, and make it, um.
I'm actually trying, I don't, I'm trying to watch, I love that.
Everybody calls Janine, she's her reputation for that. Uh, we also have a meeting Thursday, June tenth, uh, that's the first, that's our location of government, and Monday, June twenty-first, school improvement plan, important voters. Okay, there's nothing else, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Okay. Okay, motion by Rich, second by Rich.
Probably around.
Oh, wait, what's your? Okay, wait, how many do? I motion, Rich.
And I.
No, that's, that's. Sure, it's, it's a little, okay, okay, it's a little touchy here, but, okay, Rich. We're, 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 we're,